Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on June 24th, 2019 of the school district of the city of Dearborn. We have a roll call, please.
Hussein Barry.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Michael Mead.
Here.
Adele Moses.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Here.
President Petlicov.
Here. Next, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
And I guess I've been volunteered. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I guess I'll shake my own hand.
Here, I'll do the certificate. Great job.
I'll give myself a certificate. All right, thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Superintendent's update.
All right, so on the agenda, I want to mention two things. We have the bond on the agenda tonight, and I just want to mention the process. We had gone to Lansing last Monday to meet with the Department of Treasury, Mr. Wall and his team. I know Mr. Wall is here from Plant Moran. And so tonight, the approval is for the application to go to the state. And so what will have to happen is, once that's approved, then at the next board meeting, it would be officially, the ballot would get approved by the board. So it's a two-step process. And we had a very positive meeting with the Department of Treasury and very thorough, Mr. Wall, Mr. Rangel, the whole team, Paul from Plant Moran. So it was a positive news. And just to remind everyone, we've had this kind of a topic on the agenda related to a bond, going back to like, the first time we actually went public with it was May of 2017, when we had a special study session. And so we've had it on the agenda going back a long time. And in fact, some of the initial work started even prior to that, when we heard about issues of capacity at the high schools, which was about a half a year. So it's been almost a three-year process. So I want to thank the board for their support and direction along the way, and again, our team for the work they're doing. I have another agenda I am going to ask Fatimi Faraj is going to come up on retirements, since we don't have our students today.
Now, we're all good at stepping in.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to congratulate all the retirees for this month, and I'll start with Nancy Beres, Naolan, Para-Professional Special Education, 13 and 3/4 years of service, effective Danielle Blessing, from Stout, Assistant Principal, 10 years of service, effective 7/31/19. Debra Brooks, Howe, Para-Professional Special Education, 30 and 1/2 years of service, effective 8/16/19. Lisa Cronin, Stout, French Teacher, 17 years of service, effective 6/30/19. Kathleen Harris, from Howe, Para-Professional Special Education, 25 and 1/2 years of service, effective 8/22/19. Kevin Harris, Etzel Ford, History Teacher, 23 years of service, effective 6/30/19. Janice Willoughby, PAPAS, Division of District Operations, Bus Driver, 32 and 3/4 years of service, effective 6/30/19. And then we have Diane Wazola, Gear Park and Bryant Secretary 2 in the Media Center, 18 and 3/4 years of service, effective 6/30/2019. Congratulations to all the retirees.
All right, that's all I have for agenda items. Congratulations to the retirees, I'll reiterate that.
Okay, next item, please.
Not agenda items.
All right, I like to smile, Jim.
Because last week, I took over reading the agenda for him, and he was a little perturbed.
All right, so I'm going to have Shannon Peterson is going to come up and just talk about our graduation numbers. It's something really to celebrate. And in fact, Dr. Chokol and I will be at the Reeves Institute and the National Secondary School presenting on the graduation intervention model, that we also presented at the National School Board Conference.
You like that?
Good evening. So this year, we had 1,529 graduates. That is an increase from last year of about 58. 93 of those students were our Collegiate Academy students who walked with their 12th grade class but finished up their time at Henry Ford College, either getting an associate's degree or just enough credits to transfer on. I asked some of the students, they were just here getting their diplomas, and we have many going to Wayne State, Michigan State, U of M Dearborn, and U of M Ann Arbor. That was the group that I spoke to, so they're continuing on. For scholarships, this year, 15 million, $366,500 in scholarships. 619 of our students earned scholarships, which is about 40% of the class, but if you add in our early college students, they add, it's about 49% of our students walked away with some sort of scholarship, which is always good. Just a little, another little piece of data, our Henry Ford Early College students, this is not the Collegiate Academy, I'm still working with Mr. Goford to get this information for those students, but for our Henry Ford Early College students, 82% of this year's graduating class also got their associate's degree.
Outstanding.
And where are they going? Well, most common colleges for us, Henry Ford College, we know that, right? It's right in our backyard, as is U of M Dearborn, but Wayne State, Michigan State, U of M, Ann Arbor, Eastern, Western. But we also have graduates this year attending University of Pennsylvania, Wharton School of Business, and he's here. Harvard, Stanford, Princeton, Dartmouth Brown, and Yale. So, great work from our students.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So congratulations, everyone. Okay, I'm going to move us along. Thank you, Ms. Peterson. In fact, I think I'm going to have to add some of that to the presentation. What do you think?
I'll share it.
Okay, great. We had a real positive active shooter drill last week with the first responders, the police and the fire. I actually went there as an observer, and I put on a vest, which meant I was out of the event, but I got to observe, and I'm glad I did, because it really gives you an understanding, and it also gets our, hopefully, we never ever have to deal with that, but it's just a, you know, I appreciate the police. I think it's Captain Marshall, obviously Chief Haddad, Don Ball coordinated it for us, and then the fire department were there. It was a full-scale exercise, it even had a robotic, for diffusing bombs. So I got to see all of the activity, and they were very serious, too. I mean, this is, they don't treat it just like practice, they treat it as, this is an event. So we're very grateful that we do these sort of things, so that we are, unfortunately, in case of emergency, we have the familiarity. So we're going to continue to do that. I just have to mention this, per Mr. Wall, it's required by law, that in case anybody had any comments that they wanted to make today for the budget, this is, technically, it was notified as a public hearing, per state law, and again, that budget's going to the board tonight for approval, as the board's aware.
So is there anybody in the audience who has any questions about the budget? We just want to make sure you have an opportunity to speak. I guess not.
Just two other things I wanted to mention. We had a very positive, I know Mr. Trustee Barry was there on the weekend to the CRSD basketball event, it was very positive. There's been 21 of them, I've been at 20 of them. I missed last year because I was out of town, and it's just real positive how the group gives back to the community. And it was interesting to see that now some of my students, when I was there as principal and whatnot, are like 25, 26. Student that I had as a fourth grader, you know, he says his mid-30s, you know, these kind of things. And so it's nice to see some of the old students, and I, you know, I know you were there and you saw the event, and it was very positive, so just wanted to mention that. We appreciate the group there that does that. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, I was at the middle, my middle cities meetings, I'm on the executive board, they're also one of the groups that gives us population studies, and we have, it's our three times a year, and we get training, and we have meetings, and so we always have the state superintendent. So Sheila Alice was there, she's the outgoing interim, but Michael Rice, Dr. Rice, is also a member of that board, so he was there. So you have a lot of the coming, this is a real good group. It's a group of districts with, deal with different challenges, with high free and reduced lunch, and we just share ideas. So anyway, I just want to mention this, the A to F that we talked about before that passed through the lame duck, Superintendent Alice told us she had, you know, the legislatures on a conference call, and the US Department of Ed told them that this is, it's illegal, and they still, she said she still can't convince them to change it. So I can tell you that Rep. Hamood has been very supportive with budget and other things, but, you know, with some of the stuff going on, we talked about it last time, both with budget and now with accountability system, so the system that got jammed through is not...
Are they going to challenge it in the courts?
It may be, yeah. I mean, it depends on what the US Department chooses to do, but it was just interesting that she said that she couldn't convince them, they still won't change it, so I don't know why it's gotten just too much, very political up there, so. Anyway, that's all I have for my updates.
All right, then, next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
So we have, David's going to come up, I believe, for commendations.
We have the commendations first? Let me move over to the microphone.
Yeah, I was going to say, will you stand in front of the microphone, please?
You'd think the communications guy would know that.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent. Let us start with some commendations. First off, at the high school level, commendations to Juliette Baydoun, who received the sportsmanship award from the Michigan High School Gymnastics Coaches and Judges Association. She is a 10th grader at Dearborn High. Commendations to Sarah Fallgroot, who competed in the state of Michigan Special Olympics Gymnastics Meet, where she took first in floor exercises, first on vault, and second on beam. Commendations to Etzel Ford sophomore track athlete Brianna Bates, who placed third in the 100 and sixth in the 200 at the state track meet. Brianna also qualified and competed in the New Balance Nationals in North Carolina. She placed 17th with a win time of 11.8 in the 100. She is also a great student, carrying a 3.95 GPA. And commendations to Aya Islam, who was recently dubbed a Cake Boss by WXYZ Detroit. She is a 14-year-old student, she runs Aya's Sweets out of her home, where she makes deluxe cakes and other sweets for her customers. We saw that story, it's the kind of story, when you watch it, you get hungry. From our middle schools, commendations to some local businesses, Meyer and Target from Dearborn Heights and Allen Park. We want to thank them for contributing to Woodworth Middle School's PBIS program. And at the elementary school level, commendations to Howard Elementary students who raised $6,316 for the American Heart Association. This is the highest amount the school has raised for this organization. Because of the size of the donation, Howard will receive a $500 gift certificate to use for physical education equipment.
I think they did a lot of jump roping or something. Thank you. Next, please.
The Exchange Club of Dearborn Academic Excellence Awards.
I believe we have Bob Platt, who's here. There he is.
Good evening, President Petlicov.
He's the vice president, right, of the Exchange Foundation, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
First, I want to thank the Board of Education and the School District Administration for permitting the Exchange Club to present its academic excellence awards at tonight's meeting to the 2019 valedictorians of Dearborn's three comprehensive high schools. We also want to thank the high school principals and the executive director Jill Chokol for their help in administrating this award program. It is greatly appreciated. The Exchange Club of Dearborn has been in existence for nearly 95 years. Throughout these years, the men and women of Exchange have raised funds for many local community programs and projects. Many of the programs are aimed at developing tomorrow's leaders. This evening, we present the Exchange Club of Dearborn Academic Excellence Award. The 2019 valedictorians named by their high schools will be given, at one time, $1,500 cash gift to be used for their, for education or any other purpose. This year, we have an unusual but delightful situation, where two outstanding Etzel Ford High School scholars are named co-valedictorians of the graduating class. In this instance, our guidelines call for the co-valedictorians to share the $1,500 cash gift. The aim of the Academic Excellence Award program is to encourage and reward high scholastic achievement and assist recipients with the cost of furthering their education. I'd like to ask them to join me up here now, the valedictorian recipient from Dearborn High, Ms. Maxine Mackey. The valedictorian recipient from Fortson, and I have to say, go Tractors, Mr. Hassan The co-valedictorians and recipients from Etzel Ford, Mr. Jalal Baydoun. And Mr. Vincent Lee. There's just one catch here. Sometime within the next year, each recipient and a high school representative are to attend a local Exchange Club luncheon as our guests, and let our members know how you're doing in the next phase of your education. We will contact the recipients in the months ahead to find a convenient time for them to do so. Again, congratulations to the award recipients and their families, I know their families were deeply involved. And ladies and gentlemen, the valedictorians of three Dearborn Heights. Thank you.
Dr. Mazer, do you want to get? We have three other members here at the Exchange, do you like to get in the picture?
We're just...
Okay, you're observing, all right, no problem.
Other faces over there.
Okay, that's it. He's checking on me, I know.
Can I make a comment? Thank you so much. Yes, Trustee Lane.
I already raised this with Dr. Maleko, but I'd just like to throw it out there for people to consider, and I think I brought it up to one of the principals, I think it was Mr. Case Bolt, but I have spent a lot of time talking with valedictorians. I know a little bit of their psychology of achievement. I don't know about these particular valedictorians, but I know many of them are just, they're high achievers, and sometimes they're in middle school strategizing, I want to be valedictorian. I don't know if that's true or not with these folks, but dad shaking.
It's father-like. That's the furthest thing, apparently.
But in any case, I know that throughout high school, they're all thinking, hmm, you know, what classes should I take? How can I achieve my maximum? And the difference between, obviously, there's no difference between these two at Etzel. The year one of my sons graduated, there were five that tied for co-saluditorian and valedictorian. And so there were some changes then also to the way, and the time that it was calculated. The percentage of difference between them and the third, fourth, fifth is so low, it's miniscule, and at a high school like Fortson, where we have 650 students graduating, Etzel is now 320, whatever, still, I'd like to suggest that maybe we should read the top 10 graduates. We now have all the people with cord stand-up, but I'm not taking anything at all away from these valedictorians, because they're awesome and they're going to achieve throughout their lives.
And we're not suggesting to the Exchange Club that you have to give out scholarships at all.
No.
This is for us.
So it's just something I'd like to throw out, because if we have someone with a 4.9999, and then the next one is 4.9998, there needs to be a lot of, there can, there really can't be too much attention to the achievements that these folks have made, so it's just a suggestion, and I hope that the committee will consider it.
Yeah, we'll have it on the agenda for the high school with Ms. Peterson for discussion. Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Metro Bureau Scholarship.
So we have Dr. Beresie here, who, he also did some work for us last summer with the Infrastructure Committee, so he was also, had his hand in this bond that's going tonight, and we're members of the Metro Bureau, and we always get good support from them, so we appreciate you being here, Dr. Beresie.
Thank you, and I might say it was a real pleasure for us to be able to have the opportunity to work with you. So, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Maleko, good evening. As Dr. Maleko mentioned, I am Greg Beresie from the Metro Bureau, I'm Associate Executive Director, and our organization serves 77 school districts in the metropolitan area, as well as some community colleges and universities. I'm here tonight to award three $1,000 scholarships to three of your students. In this year, 23 students from the metropolitan Detroit region, representing 32 school districts, applied for the Metro Bureau scholarships. Applications were reviewed by school superintendents, curriculum directors, and they were judged on academic merit, career choice, and the student's vision as to how they will use their education to benefit others. At this time, I would like to call to the podium Hadi Nazrdeen, Yara Elayan, and Zoe Rogala, and I spoke with Zoe. These three students are three of 17 that will receive the scholarship. And before I present you with the scholarship, I just want to make a couple more comments about the Metro Bureau Scholarship Fund. It was named after Dr. Tom McLennan, and for some of you, you probably remember, Dr. McLennan grew up in the Down River area, he started his teaching career here in Dearborn, and he obtained a bachelor's, a master's, a doctorate degree in education, and a Juris Doctorate degree as well at Wayne State University. And it was extremely important to Dr. McLennan that he find a way to help students fund their education, because he realized how important it was for children coming from hard-working families to go to school. So with that said, he started the Metro Bureau Scholarship Fund during his 24 years of service for the Metro Bureau, and it gives me a great deal of pleasure tonight to present not only a certificate, a check for $1,000, and a Metro Bureau pin to our three students.
Pin, too.
So, we have two here. This one, in, first thing, yeah, this is you. Congratulations. And Zoe, this is yours. And we'll make sure, we'll make sure the other certificate and check gets to the student that was not able to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, students.
Absolutely.
I know that for our students, every little bit counts.
Zoe was very active on my advisory council, and I've known her since she was a third grader at DeVault, and I still have some pictures.
Well, she has to come back when she's a successful whatever.
She came to the event at the Renaissance, when I gave my address, so you were with her.
Yes, she did. I had a conversation with her.
Yeah.
Wonderful young lady. All right, then, next, please.
Teacher of the Year and Impact Awards.
We have David coming up for that as well. Last week it was Mr., or two weeks ago it was Mr. Wall, now it's David's.
So every year, we partner with the Dearborn Chamber of Commerce for the Teacher of the Year Awards. Actually, this is the 22nd year of the Alberta Mirrorhead Teacher of the Year Award. Beard of Mirrorhead, most of you know, a very famous entrepreneur, businesswoman in the city of Dearborn, somewhat of a legend. She created this award because she really wanted to recognize the hard-working teachers in our district. And since that time, it's expanded a little bit, there are now four teachers. That was added, actually, that was added about 10, 12 years ago now, and we bumped it up to four rather than just three. And this was just so that we could kind of hit that K1, 2 market, and then the 3 through 5, because the elementary grade seems so big, and then middle school, you only have the three grades, and the high school, the four grades, so that's why that was done. So there was a ceremony, obviously, it was held at the Performing Arts Center earlier this year, where the teachers were awarded. They all, each received a $1,000 cash prize, as well as a, just a gorgeous glass apple made right here in Dearborn by the Glass Factory. So our winning teachers for this year, in that K through, pre-K through 2nd grade category, was Lisa Yance from Open Elementary. In the 3rd through 5th grade category, it was Kimberly Donahue from Gear Park. Aaron Fell at Woodworth Middle School was the middle school winner, obviously, and Keith Ridzik of Etzel Ford was the Etzel Ford High School winner. So a few years back, five years back, we thought that, you know, this is great, that we're honoring our classroom teachers, but it would be nice if there was a way to honor those staff members who may not fall into this category, so principals, counselors, techs, computer techs, bus drivers, custodians, everybody else. And included in that, there are a lot of teachers, such as media specialists, they're teachers, they've got master's degrees, and they often are left out of this Teacher of the Year Award, because it's more for classroom teachers. So five years ago, the Impact Awards were created, and this award does just that. It tries to recognize all those other folks who impact the education that goes on in our district. So this year, our four Impact Award winners, our first one is Lisa DiMarco, who is an instructional technician at the Dearborn Heights campus. Mark Valalutko is a custodian over at Fortson. Ricardo Sortes is the transportation dispatcher, and Manal Hamood is a social responsibility room teacher at Dearborn High. And so those are the Impact Award winners. Forgot to mention in commendations, that one of the, another commendation that we wanted to give out, actually, not really a commendation, this is more, more of a, well, it is what it is, it's a birthday greeting to Woodworth Middle School 7th grade teacher, Justin Mustenan, today is his birthday.
So self. Yes, Trustee Lane.
I have a question, if, I don't know whether Mr. Mustenan can answer this or not. Is it correct that only students can nominate for, there was a time period when parents could nominate, and then just students, and now I'm not sure.
For Teacher of the Year, it is, it has always been students, students nominate?
Not always. No, because I nominated some teachers.
Okay.
So currently, is it students only?
So I would say for at least the last 10 or 12 years, it's been students, and that's why actually, the name of the award has been changed to the Student Choice Teacher of the Year Award. Now, elementary school students, parents are allowed to help, and as well as any special need students, parents can help with those nominations as well.
Because I was wondering whether the special ed area is adequately represented for students that, sometimes students don't recognize what assistance they've been given.
But the parents will.
And parents will, and I know a parent who nominated, in the old days, when parents could nominate, I know a parent who did nominate someone who won.
Being on the selection committee, the serving on that chamber committee, I have read nominations that have come from students with some parent help in the special ed area.
All right, then, thank you very much. All right, next, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
A donation of $2,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for middle school religious diversity program. A donation of $595.48 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for flexible seating. A donation of $3,930... A donation of $3,930.38 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for hydration stations. A donation of $2,500 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for robotics. Donation of $500 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for freshman in JV football and basketball. A donation of a violin has been offered to Duval Elementary School by Paul and Sarah Boyce to be used by students that are unable to rent or purchase a violin for music class. A donation of a clarinet has been offered to Duval Elementary School by Elizabeth Smith to be used for students that are unable to rent or purchase a clarinet for music class. And a donation of $150 has been offered to Nolan Elementary School by the Garden Club of Dearborn to be used for the purchase of perennials for their butterfly garden.
Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on agenda and non-jetta items for action or assign them by 7:10 by submitting a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. I have no blue cards.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Finance Committee meeting, June 10th, Board Report 18-151. Building and Site Committee meeting, June 10th, Board Report 18-152. Policy Committee meeting, June 10th, Policy, oh, I'm sorry, Board Report 18-153. And Regular P12 meeting, June 10th, Board Report 18-154. Recommended action is to make any necessary corrections and approve, move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, are there any corrections?
I'm not looking at you, Mary. Yes, Trustee McDonald.
There was one thing on the Building and Sites Committee meeting. It had said that there were three members of the committee that were there, and Trustee Thorpe was on the phone. I just want the meetings to reflect that the four members that were there were not involved in a discussion.
No. I stepped in after Trustee Thorpe had to leave the phone, so I did not participate. In the, in the beginning of the meeting, I was his alternate. So he was on the phone in the beginning.
Once I had to get over to the promotion ceremony for my daughter, I stepped out of the call.
For less than half an hour, and then I rotated in.
Right.
The way the meeting, the minutes are written, it sounds like there were four people involved, and that can't be.
And there wasn't a call. Yeah. And then, and then, and then I stepped in when Trustee Thorpe had to leave, hang up.
That was all I saw.
Okay, thank you. Yes, that's, that's a good point to make. All right then, are those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? We'll attach a unanimous roll. Next, please.
Special reports, Dearborn Education Foundation.
Townsend's gonna come up.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all. I just kind of wanted to go over our year end with you guys and let you know what's been going on. This school year, we've given to date a total of $133,328 and back into 24 buildings within the district. Last year, that number was only $108,301.
Only.
Like our children say, right? Of, of that $133,328, $79,000 of that was restricted for, for certain projects within the district. Last year, that number was $44,772. Of that $133,328, we gave out $14,237 in scholarships this year. Last year, that number was $9,277. Our raffle, our big shot raffle ticket winner took home $8,251 after taxes. And last year, that winner took home $6,934. So we are growing, and we've had a phenomenal year. We have some exciting news coming up. We have the launch of our crowdfunding site for the district. We've already been through a pilot phase, a test pilot phase with a few teachers, and that went very well. And we'll be launching that as soon as we get our, oh, our, like, little rules in place. You know, we want to make sure that-
Guidelines.
Yeah, our guidelines. We're also looking to launch an alumni campaign and adding four new scholarships this year. We do have three signature events, and of course, our next one is our golf outing on September 22nd at TPC. So we hope, if you're a golfer, that we'll see some of you there. Just come out and enjoy dinner and bet on some auction items. We also have our Mardi Gras, which will be held February 25th next year. And our green tie dinner will be moved to the first week of June to not interfere with Ramadan and Eid. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Yes, Trustee Thorpe.
Not a question as much as a comment. I'm back serving as the Board Representative on the Dearborn Education Foundation. It was great to see progress throughout the year and the effort that's being placed on each of the Board members, becoming like the sponsor for one or two schools. So I think you said 24 schools received awards, or, so not everyone is taking advantage of everything that's available yet. We want to keep spreading the word throughout the district. So thank you.
Yes, I just had that conversation actually with Council President Tabaja, who's serving on the Education Foundation as well. And, and that's the one thing that's always been a struggle. It's improving tremendously from years past, so really appreciate it. I was a Board Representative a couple of years ago, so I understand the effort and, and the work that goes into this. Anytime you have a group of volunteers, it's a tremendous push and pull to, to make things happen. So we really appreciate your job, the job that you do, Chesley.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Trustee.
I do have a question. With your new crowdsourcing fundraising program that you're setting up, I'm just curious, the only way someone would really have information about a particular fundraising event that's going on is if they were, like, it was their student's classroom? Or how do you spread the word and make that bigger? Or is there a certain place that everybody can look if they're just interested in what's going on?
So normally, your teachers would go and do a GoFundMe, and then they'd broadcast that on their social media. With us, it will be on a, on a separate page of our website. They will be able to share those links with their people, but they're also tapping into our resources as well. So in the test pilot, I think just from sharing that via the foundation, they got another 4,000 views.
Oh, good, okay.
So it is a good collaboration, and people can choose and pick the types of things that they want to fund. So we're just hoping to grow and, and be able to fund more items.
Does this make it more difficult, and I'm, I'm gonna tap in, because I know time is an integral part, especially when it comes to fundraising and, and monitoring. And that you always want to reassure anybody who is going to be donating that we have a good system in place that makes sure that the money is, is wisely spent. Is, does this complicate things? Or is it a manageable, since you've done a test?
It's in infancy stage, so we're gonna see how it grows.
Okay.
We're using a separate account for it, so it makes it easier, so it's not being co-mingled with other fundraising activities for the foundation.
Well, that's what I worried about, was a lot of co-mingling.
And we'll have to grow the program as the progress for the foundation grows.
I was the one that asked the foundation to look at this too, because part of it were these outside companies getting the percentage and/or not having the control. So now we have, you know, there's probably gonna be some, you know, trials and tribulations, but it's better because then we do control the system, and then the money goes to the foundation rather than some company getting the percentage that they take off of those sites.
So when your teachers create their crowdfunding item, we, we will be able to, it won't go live automatically. It'll have to be reviewed before it can go live.
It will be vetted, okay.
So, yeah, it'll all be vetted. And, and I have to say, Dr. Maleko's staff here has been phenomenal in vetting our grants. So it's not something that they're, you know, already not used to. So we'll make sure that, you know, it's all proper and still aligns with the district. Money will be released sooner than the way our grants are done because we know that with GoFundMe, they get them sooner. So that's being implemented, but we're looking forward to it, and we're excited. I, I hope it takes off and it's massive, and I have to hire somebody just to do that for me. So, anything else, guys?
Thank you.
All right then.
All right, thank you.
You can go home now, Chesley.